They called this meeting to order. That the record show that our commissioner is present. Please stand for pleasure, allegiance.
Praise allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as all.
Looks like there's Jerry.
All right, next, discuss about budget workshop for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
He's not here, it's okay.
Okay. All right, I think all of you got the latest package on the, any questions on it? Or, now Matt, I do, on, next year, we started on the last Wednesday, with Mineral Land, the county is going to get some CBT funds, $450,000. We're eligible for that, but we need to make a gentleman's agreement between the city and us, which I will do, and see if we could get that. Us, we see the funds first, and then the city gets it the second year. So we could use that money, and I was at the office of commission, maybe we could use that money for the Trontera project, but it's up to the commissioners.
So we'd only be a million and a half short.
Yeah. And then we also, I don't know, I sent you the email that we also, Indigent Fund, Indigent Fund went up from 37 to, did you get that one too?
Yeah, I got that one.
Okay.
It did go up a little bit.
Yeah, it went up like $12,000. Anyway, but those are the things that were last week before, but I think that $450,000 for city, and I will talk to Carl, see when we can get that, but it should be this fiscal year. Thing about it is, like everything else, we need to talk to the city, let us get it first, and then they get it. But the second year, we don't get anything but taking the second. So I will talk to the city, I will get on the agenda, see if we can do a general agreement to use it first. Okay? And as soon as I find out that, I'll give you all that material. We're, we just got told Wednesday last week. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
One deal, we had a fire last week. We had one truck that broke on the way out of the door, and another truck caught on fire. I know this court, the decision to raise taxes or something, but, I mean, if we just raised it just one penny, and probably dedicated that one penny to go to fire department and law enforcement, just to try to make, make this up. I think he needs, right now, that truck that we bought, for $19,000, I think it cost him around $2,500 to fix it, there was some sand in the part, but it got fixed. But it is, we're driving brush trucks right now, that are 99 models, and also that one truck, I guess it's a rescue truck, is the one that caught on fire. And, I, again, I mean, I know this court's to raise taxes, but if we raised it one penny, it'd come up with about, oh, less than $200,000. I mean, that would help.
We've got an item on the next agenda, I've been Jerry for a while to look into this. We have the ability on these wrecks and stuff to charge our expenditures to recoup some of that, which I think will be able to generate some revenue to be able to do what you're talking about, I'm hoping. When we go to these wrecks and we do these other things out there, we should be able to recoup our travel costs and the cost for us to go do it back from these insurance companies. So, I know Jerry's got an item for the next agenda, Jerry, to bring in a lady that will assist us in collecting that revenue, and hopefully it will give us some, some sort of money to be able to do what you're talking about, that I agree we need to do something.
Yeah. And the reason I also wanted to have this workshop, so if we do want to raise, if we do want to raise our tax one cent, we're limited on time, so we need to do it, that's, that's my only concern, right Matt?
Correct. We are running, we're in the fourth quarter, we're running short on time. If we're going to go ahead and raise it above the effective, right, we're going to have to initiate that process.
What happened in the law library fund? It looks like it's, kind of broke. It used to be a lot of money.
Sure. And that's a possibility, and we're getting that situation worked out with the district clerk, once again, those fees come out, they have installed that new process for the month of October, sorry, August, and she did say that revenues have increased about 20% coming out of there. So we just got to get back into.
That's what the law, so we spent $50,000 on the law library fund last, this year?
If that's what it says, yes, I have it in front of me.
But we're only anticipating to generate about $20,000?
Correct, but that was based on revenues coming out of lower trajectory. Now that we know why they were trending lower, we expect them to trend back up.
I think Judge Gudren, didn't he say that also that?
He's also going to extinguish some expenses coming in there.
Yeah, so we should be able to build it up a little bit.
So with, with this budget, we stay short overall of $983,000.
That is correct, but let's just recap.
Minus?
On 7/31, when we first, when the judge first passed his budget, we were at 1.8. So all of this has come through, with the exception of about $80,000, all of that, that difference was made up of cost cutting. So tremendous amount of cost cutting has been done.
And then this shows us?
Almost at unsustainable rate.
Yeah. Shows us to have an ending cash balance and interest sinking of 1.5 million.
If this budget is passed as it is, yes.
And it shows to have an ending cash balance in general fund of 258,000.
Oh, one balance, not necessarily cash balance, but yes, one balance.
We continue to fund these capital projects out of attempt to cash out of our budget every year, like the Westgate and all that.
Yeah.
Which is going to put us in a bind come October on revenue.
Yeah, we definitely will have a liquidity problem in October, and we're looking at ways to have options to avoid that crunch. And we can discuss those later next week in court. But you are correct.
If we move a penny or throw out of the interest and sinking into the general fund, and use up some of the beginning cash balance and interest sinking fund to balance that, would that help this situation, or just enhance it for next year?
That's not going to do, our, our issue is going to be October. So this won't, this won't affect our liquidity issue. However, going forward in our financial statements and fiscal health, it would be prudent to go ahead and reduce INS, to move some of that balance over to general fund, and to keep it in general fund, as in non-span, not non-spanable, but unassigned or committed, something that will show that we do have cash available if the court decides. But having, as far as the fiscal health, having all that money wrapped up in interest sinking, and having an extremely low level, five, six days in operating in a general fund is, is not beneficial to the county's financial statements.
How would we accomplish that task?
Well, we would accomplish that task by reducing the pennies that are going to INS, and then bring the money down, and have the money filter into some sort of committed fund that cannot be accessed without court action.
So if we moved over, we currently have 0.0411 cents in interest and sinking. If we moved over three of those cents into the general fund?
Three or two cents, you asked, something like that?
That would, that would give you about a $400,000 fund available in the general fund, and then we'd reduce the interest and sinking fund ending balance by that $400,000.
Correct.
What does our financial advisor recommend we have in there?
I did not speak with our financial advisor, I just speak with Mr. Prince, who did echo those, those same thoughts, however.
The only problem, did you explain to him that we're fixing to have to do a tax note for Frontero Road, that if we move any money from interest and sinking, we won't have enough money to make the payment?
Well, that's not necessarily true, because we can always transfer it back. See, well, once it's in the general, at least we have options. Once it's stuck in interest and sinking like we are now, we're going to have a cash crunch in October. We don't have.
You're not going, you're not going to have the money, Matt. You're not going to have the money. I mean, we've been, we've been through this, court can do whatever they want to go do. My thing is, we're just, we're band-aiding the problem.
Okay.
And to me, you're fixing, you're going to take out, I mean, and it fixes, where, yeah, next year, it looks like we have a little bit of money, but you really don't. I mean, and you're not going to have, you gotta, this is what I'll, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, Commissioner. The only thing that scares me is, is that you're not going to leave enough money in there in order to make the payment, if, if we have to couple the payments. You are 983, we are $983,000 in the hole. If the wind farm was to come on and all this other stuff, all we do is basically get out of the hole.
Yeah, if we go with this seven-year, on a 1.7, 1.8, not 1.75, that's what our special payments are going to look like.
Right.
Right?
Two 75.
Yeah, sorry about that. Because I'm looking at it straight out of my current aim, sorry about that.
On the seven-year note?
Seven years, yeah, I do have a four-year, which.
Maybe we can afford to pay the seven, like, I mean, we don't have the money to pay the two 70s, whatever.
Let's borrow the 1.48?
Correct. Yeah, just by moving the money over, it just, it gives us options. Right now, we have no option. You know, it's an interest sinking, and that's where it is, which it's.
You're going to be able to have a financial advisor, but?
I absolutely can, but it is rare to have that much money percent wise. In fact, even there's even IRS code about being 110%, which, we're not there yet, but in the past, we have that.
I'm not advocating that we move it to the general fund to spend it, I'm more advocating that we'll move it to the general fund to have a, a fund balance that allows us to fund some of these grants and projects that put us in a cash bind every single year, to have some liquid cash to be able to fund these projects. And we can't continue to fund these large capital projects of $3 or $4 million out of a cash balance in our fund. We have to have a liquid fund that's enabled to do that, or we're going to have to start looking at other ways to fund these projects while we wait for reimbursement. The long-term effect of our cash balance on these grants and, and the projects and stuff, use up cash, the Westgate used up a lot of cash, we're not going to, we're going to get the money back, but we're not going to get it back till probably October, I mean, November, December.
Correct. Yeah, of our revenues based upon this, of $15,000, $15 million, the Westgate's even up 1.7, so it's even over 10% of our revenues, just.
And, and so when you're, when you're looking at, at funding those projects in the future, I think we have to look at, at different ways to fund them, instead of trying to fund them out of our, our budget, the way we're doing it. We're going to have to look at, at borrowing the money. The interest is extremely cheap compared to the cost of not having liquid cash available to us for the other things that we need. Especially when all of your money's tied up, sitting over here in the interest and sinking fund. And I'm not advocating you draw the 1.5 down, but I think you can move part of that across, or attempt to move part of it across to a fund, not, not to spend it, but to have some sort of cash in there.
Do we, do we need to leave anything in there because we raised the taxes for the libraries or any, do we need to leave this stuff upstairs in the tax rate?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Prince about that, and he said as long as we can still have high enough reserve to make payments.
Okay, so we're not bound to?
Correct.
I would, you know, I'm not advocating we do it now, but I would like to bring our financial advisor in and give us some, some ideas about what we'd look at long-term, you know? We can always amend this budget at a later date and, and adjust if we have to.
We can, yes.
I'm not advocating we do it now, but I would like to look at the, the effect of the whole thing, and how we look at these things in the future, so we don't find ourselves in this position as we move along. Because it, it's not that the cash isn't available for October, it's the cash is tied up in something else, and we have to wait to get it back. It's not that it's not there, it's just it's tied up.
Correct.
And, and that's what creates, so we may be looking at having to do a, a, some sort of a note out of the interest and sinking fund to carry through, I mean, out of the general fund to carry through October, while we wait for the reimbursement to come back on the, the 910.
1.7, yes, you're right.
But we need to start looking at some long-term deals that we don't put ourselves back in this, with go back to what we've talked about before, is budget freezes and those types of things earlier in the year, so that we don't find ourselves in these positions while we work through this process.
So we've got 1.7 out, Matt?
It's 1, 6, 4, 7.
1, 6, 50. So basically, we're about $300,000 above what we budgeted for.
Correct, we are, and that's where we're starting getting the problem.
And we won't anticipate getting that money back till probably the end of this year. I'm thinking like November, I mean, December, most likely.
Right, November.
November.
Right, but once, um, once we hit to November, we'll be fine, because that's when we'll have tax revenue come in, and then this will obviously hit, so.
And then it depends on how long it takes us to approve this budget before they can get the, the tax notices out. How long does it take you, Dean?
Maybe by the 10th of October.
And then you start seeing revenue?
If I have all the way by the end of this year, which I should have, it's maybe about the 10th of the month, I think.
And you usually start seeing the revenue by the end of the month?
Yeah, on the 30th, about the 30th.
And what is our payroll?
About $490.
Every two weeks?
Correct.
But we can do a short-term gap out of the general fund to borrow the money to cover that while our tax revenue comes back in?
We can, and we're working on that as a, as a stop, but hopefully we don't have to initiate that, but we will work on getting that ready to go if we have to.
I'd like to see us bring in the financial advisor and look at some of these, well, we're not going to deal with it right now, but at some point, how we deal with the interest and sinking.
Okay. Now, what I don't know, and I can check on, is amending the tax allocation. I'm probably checking on that, and I'll get my answer by today, but if it's passed, then we change the tax allocation after it's passed through budget amendment. We'll find that out. So if we can't, then we need to decide before we do pass the budget, if you're going to reduce the payments or not.
I don't think you can, you can readjust it without hearings, and this is the only time you have to, to adjust that tax rate. But I would like to hear from a financial advisor about the effects of that, and I don't know when you would be able to get those answers.
Okay.
And then, I notice in here, we don't have the DA's budget in here, if we're going to move him into the, back underneath the county?
That is my hope, but.
I thought that's what we were going to do.
Okay. We do have the DA, we do have expenses allocated to the DA.
Yeah, but you're, you're off, yeah, you're off about $3,000 over.
About $3,000?
But if we're going to do that, we need to incorporate it into this budget.
Actually, did the, did the deal, because we talked about, we talked about, if we set it up, this is what the county would do, that would be his part, and then the employee salary.
Mm-hmm. Which would be a total cost to us of?
117,000.
117, and we have 4?
We got 414 in there.
And I didn't even, the last time that we talked, the DA was here, we had talked about, he wanted to go up on the first assistant, five, and second assistant to 72, or something like that, and, I mean, I, when I did this, I stuck with what we had, what we would end up with.
Yeah, and I think we should stay at that. I mean, if his intention, this would include health, retirement, and everything?
Yeah, health, retirement, the FICA on that 305, and then from Horches, Texas Workforce to miscellaneous, that is what was in his budget as he presented it, so I just left it all there.
And then they said a capital outlay for 2,500?
Yeah.
And miscellaneous at 35?
35,000, he actually, and I didn't bring in the list, but he actually gave that 35,000 as sort of, when you see miscellaneous, it sounds like a lot, but he gave a long list, and it was broke down as to what it was going to be used for. I just didn't have the space, but I mean.
And we're short, so if we cut traveling training and capital outlay out of there, that would get us down to the original amount of money we had budgeted.
Yeah.
Or cut whatever we need out of those two items to get to the, to the 4?
It's 414, nothing.
Right?
Correct. 3,000.
414, so 3,000, so we'd have to cut out of those last three line items enough to balance that 3,000.
Who were these salaries when he came in? Uh, Jesus, man, well, when, when he came in, I think the first assistant was making 85, and then they were making more money than what is here budgeted. What we did, Commissioner Wardlaw, is that when they left us in 2012, 2013, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that, but when they left us in 2012, 2013, they were making X amount, and then if you figure, if you calculated what the rest of the employees made with us, with the $1,500 or the $1,700 of the 3% since 2012 till now, that's what they would be making the day they stayed with us. Oh, I gave the wrong one, sorry about that. This one, here's what they would be making if, if they'd stayed with us since 2012, 2013.
And he was asking the first, second, and the district, and the district investigator be up for more, but we kept up the same way.
Yeah, and the way we came up with this, the way we came up with the number where it says county proposed salaries, was we added in the percentage that everybody, every other employee had made since they left, and that's how we came up with those numbers. So nobody's losing money? Well, he gave his first assistant 15,000, and the only thing is, though, that he has a supplement that he could pay, he would end up having to pay the 18,372, which says first assistant, these numbers here is what he'd have to come up with in order to make what they're making right now, and he said he had money in which to pay it. There's an account that we're auditing right now that has 615,000, I believe, in it. It looks like that, we might end up with either 88% of the 400,000 or, or 400,000, so 215,000 of that one account still hits, with which he would be able to make up the difference.
Can you work this out?
Yes, sir.
You would?
In addition to that, he did start collecting his pre-trial, so he's collecting that to generate additional.
And down at the bottom, where it says total compensation, there's a state contribution of the 22.5, we didn't touch it, that way he could use it for part of that, part of what, the money he's going to have.
So do we need to incorporate this into the budget? And just readjust it by the $3,400 off of those last?
Traveling training? I think if we went ahead and did it, then at least we have a starting point again to, this is it.
Okay, so you're going to work, we're going to, we're going to take that out, treating him, treat him like he's a member of the responsible county, as opposed to a non-responsible county.
Just put him in the budget like we used to have, based off of this scenario, and then reducing the 3,407 to balance back to the 414 that we have.
The only thing we need to make sure of, Commissioner, is, and this is what we've been talking about all along, the county is only going to be, we're only going to pay what is set as county proposed salaries, so anything else after that, he'd have to pay. And if, and at the point that he has no supplement money, and they come back to us, you know, the way it looks right now, is that the only thing we would pay is?
Those tax salaries.
Whatever the county has set as.
Commissioner, I think the last time you were here, we, we asked him that, and he said he was willing to do that.
So you would set it up similar to what you have?
Similar to that, yeah, and it would, similar to what the salaries look for other offices that receive supplements.
So you would just add to the existing district attorney's budget, and?
Correct.
And create that? Looking somewhere. 18? We need to get change, that way she's going to put the company that I just gave her, their deductions, whatever we are going to deduct, whether it be from capital outlay over 35,000, we need to let her know which one we're deducting from.
But she actually, that he handed out to you, he'll just write?
I would, I would say we take capital outlays, and somebody else got capital outlay, it's 2,500, and then the rest to come out of that 35,000. We take the capital, and then that leaves you a shortfall of $1,107.73, and then we could reduce either the traveling training or the miscellaneous by that amount.
If you reduce the miscellaneous, and he has more room in which to pull it from, because there was a bunch of line items in there.
That's right, you do it, and just plug it in the budget the way you have it, break out, you know, salaries, so that everybody understands where that money came from, where it's coming from, to get to those numbers.
Anybody else have a question? Matt, are you too?
Well, are we true?
No, the reason, no, the reason I'm asking, because I know the chief, the chief wanted to say something.
Matt, Matt, you have a question?
I was trying to call her and tell her about Monday, Monday the 11th, and she didn't answer her phone.
I don't know, I mean, she's, she's in Houston, she doesn't make it, if she doesn't make it, she can make it to the next one, I mean, I understand, like, I have an issue in Houston, so.
What was the cause to the reduction on the election line item?
I mean, it's kind of a drama, I think, 92.
I noticed there were several changes, but they're not all, some have increases, some have less, I mean, 5% or?
That was reduced by 5%.
But not all of them were reduced 5%.
Correct, like your 990s were not reduced, some things that you talked about in the past, which were not able to be reduced. Which one do you have a question?
Um, well, the question I have is like, is the election expense, but then you have, for example, you have computer maintenance, and it went from 55 to 65.
Correct, that went from 55 to 65 because we moved the maintenance that the JPs were paying, we moved that over to this one, took out of there.
And then the appraisal offices, what caused the increase?
The budget.
Oh, so we have to fund their total budget?
Yes.
Okay.
What is your, what does it usually cost you in elections? What is your, what does it usually cost you in elections when you do a full-blown election like we have to election? Well, you're gonna do a full-blown election next year.
Well, I'm keeping track of the expenses only because we have a bond election under.
Yeah.
And if you have the bond election on there, you're able to move those expenses. If the bond passes, you're able to reimburse. So we're keeping track, it's, it's running, it's gonna run about twenty, thirty, forty thousand right now.
Because next year you have only the bond.
I have the bond and the constitutional.
But I mean, out of this, this, this kind of budget, that's all, because the primaries in March are funded by the parties, right?
Yes, but I still have to do the early voting part.
And they don't reimburse you for that?
Not the early voting. Early voting we're required to do for almost every election, which is-
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That, from my ear, that the city secretary quit because he didn't know how to do election.
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna cost us more? Are we gonna get reimbursed for that?
They get, they, they have a separate contract if, if we get the terms worked out, which have not been worked out yet. But they, this is handled like a regular contract, like when I do Comstock or the hospital or anything else, they have to pay their full expenses, terms from them.
So we're-
The only thing we do is, is, uh, let them lease the equipment, and, uh, for the first time, the election code now lets us charge more than five dollars to lease these machines. So we will be getting some income from the leasing of the equipment to them.
I gather, uh, from what I gather, the information I got is that the next, uh, city council, the city that asked the county to run the election, because they don't have somebody to run there.
Yes, sir, they, they approached me back in July, and so we've been trying to work out the terms. Uh, they don't have what I need right now to run their election, so they're trying to work on that, trying to get it done, but my deadline for them is September twenty-second, because that's the deadline I have, I'm not gonna put it off anymore. We're doing, we're doing the constitutional and the bond on a separate, on a separate ballot from them, because they've had a delay in getting the information they need. So I'm not holding up-
Okay.
The elections, and we're responsible for them.
Right. Thank you, Dean.
Yes, sir.
What do you, on the pennies, on the interest and sinking, what do you want to move?
Two cents?
Two cents.
Two cents?
Two cents.
So why doesn't he just go ahead and work that up, that front paper, I mean, because it's just a matter of working up page sixty-six, and then you're, or all the dollars are on. Go ahead and get that done, that way we can see it, instead of waiting for the financial advisor, and then we're sort of sitting there waiting to go back.
Okay.
Can you work that up, moving two cents?
Just, um- Will you even come back, or you want it by hand?
No, I mean, I'd like to see it, yeah, I'd like to see it when you get done, the next time, if you'll do it on this, and then do it on that page with that below and everything, where luckily shows on there.
And then the revenue portion, create in the general fund, a, uh, what were you calling it?
Economic stabilization fund?
Yeah.
Makes us sound real, we pretend.
That's not a review. Yeah, and you ain't gonna spend it, but. Yeah, if you can do that, we'll do that.
Okay.
And then, when do you expect to hear back probably from the financial department?
I, I was expecting to hear back from yesterday, so I would expect today to hear back from, although, uh, Mr. Coons did return my call, but, uh, he has some more. Must have been a minute and a half. Sounds like pretty late.
So when you have our next one, which is the actual adoption of a budget number?
No, not if we're, not if we're raising.
I don't think anybody wants to raise it.
We're raising taxes, so.
We're not, so we're not. Well, it must go back to page one.
Well, you need to tell me, because I'm printing out the agenda for Monday.
Well, I mean, if nobody wants to raise, nothing going through the process, then nobody, it's gonna be a four-to-one vote.
So if that's the case, we're back to a one-million-dollar hole. Which, we know this is an extremely tight, unsustainable budget that was passed with no capital outlay, no raises, cuts in travel and training, um, minimal personnel picked up. Personnel drop. Something else of importance? But the key word there is unsustainable. So next year, we will have increased revenues, hopefully with the increase in tax rate. But all that's gonna do is just plug the hole on an unsustainable budget.
You're really advocating a tax increase, aren't you?
I'm not. I, I'm advocating that a balance.
Roger, Roger called.
What I'm advocating.
Roger, uh, called Wind Farm, to check and see what that would bring in. They said that they probably, sixty-nine towers, I'm not, sixty-nine towers. Uh, sixty-nine towers, but they probably don't see completion for a year and a half. Is that about right, Roger?
I didn't really ask about the time limit, I was just asking about the maximum number of build-out.
One of the individuals that I visited said that they bought a year and a half, but what we're looking at is if they do come online with the, if, with them coming online, getting the charge of the tax, uh, if we were to go up on our increase on property values, what happened this year, which we generated another hundred and some odd thousand dollars difference, a hundred, I think a hundred and seventy-two or something. A hundred and seventy-two thousand, with the wind farm and everything, next year, commissioners and judge, uh, basically, we're just floating along. There would, there would be no, there would be no raises, and there would be no, no money for capital outlay.
Matt, what do you tell a sustainable budget?
Sustainable, one that's balanced and one that has room for expansion within the account.
Okay.
Off of the increase, off of the increased, uh, valuations for the following year, that those be absorbed in the budget for growth.
And you're a hundred percent convinced that within the bounds of this budget, we are as lean as we can be and as efficient as we can be?
Yeah, absolutely, you're hardly ever gonna be as efficient as you, as you can be. There's always gonna be cuts. But, but listen-
Efficient, we could be leaner, but efficient, I mean, I think, heck, we're all doing pretty damn good.
You, you did cut almost a million dollars, you, you, and we are efficient, and we, we still, this is the budget that's passed, we don't know the full ramifications of this, and we won't know until we're in month eight, nine, ten of next year, we won't know the full ramifications. But it's, um, it is passed, we can always be leaner, but even doing more cuts and getting leaner, isn't gonna save you another million dollars.
Oh, no, no, it's not gonna fix them, I understand that. Understand that at some point you have to look at a tax increase, to, to, to continue to generate the revenues that you need to. But it's very difficult to look at tax increases when you, well, I still don't think we have all the special funds under control. I still don't think there's areas in here that, that, that can be looked at, you know, there, there's a lot of costs that we spend money on that may, you know, the answer is always throw more people and more money at it, and sometimes technology can, can deal with some of those issues. And start making people do the parts that they're supposed to do.
Correct, that, that is one thing that's in here, the, um, unfilled positions are in here at a twelve-month employment rate, which we know that is more likely not gonna happen. We could, two-month hiring freeze, three-month hiring freeze, which would reduce it more.
And you have another, there's a ranch in the northern end of the county that just sold, and they should start construction on another wind farm up there here in the next probably year and a half to two weeks. It will be coming online in probably about two weeks.
And two pipelines.
Okay, that's, man, that's gonna be great for you. But not that, which, which that, you can always lower the tax rate. If we get increased valuations, the tax rate can be lowered.
He still wants the three.
Yeah, I know what he wants.
Not if you recommend the tax rates?
I, I am recommending we try to balance.
Which is how much of a tax increase?
Well, we're not gonna do a tax increase to balance this.
Well, you just said, you just said you wanted to balance.
We want to try to balance, the reason we started this process-
Million dollars, right?
Well, I'm not saying that. When we first started this process, we said it didn't have to be done all in one year, we knew that we could slowly work our way up there. Um, revenue caps didn't pass this year, but two years from now, who knows, they may, they may pass, and if that passed, our last, our two cent tax increase last year would have been the limit. That would have been it, two cents is the highest we could have gone without a vote or approval, so. What that means is-
If we had two and a half cents, would that get us out of the hole, and what, what are?
Well, it wouldn't get us out of the hole, but it's gonna put us in better position.
But if you did two and a half cents this year, then the following fiscal year, with the values that might be coming in higher, it really, really helps.
It would, it would.
I vote for it, I try.
Valuations are lower, so. On our rate as of this, the tax bill, they should see right now, as it is, there's a decrease in our taxes paid.
Well, and, and one of the things, we went to that school a couple of weeks ago, I mean, the appraisal district now is going to have to freeze more, uh, badges. I mean, the, what the state did in getting with the veterans and everything else, I mean, that's fixing to come on.
Purple partnership and things.
I mean, it, it's just, it's just more, there, there's more individuals that are gonna get a break, uh, and, I mean, deserve it, but it's going to hurt our, our bottom dollar.
No, I'm not saying we need to plug too many, I'm not saying we need to go two and a half, what I am saying is with revenue caps in the future, there's just gonna have to be a mentality.
He needs to agree with somebody.
I'm just giving ideas, there needs to be a mentality.
You sound like a real good politician.
There needs to be a mentality of measured and planned on our tax, and not-
Two cents?
And, and not constant until we're at a, where we have to raise a nickel or something, because we're not gonna be able to, so the, uh, the mentality and mythology needs to be planned and measured.
Two, one and a half, what would you recommend? You're not gonna recommend any of it.
Two is four hundred thousand.
Correct, roughly.
Four hundred and fourteen at ninety-three, you know, knock on six, that's about a million, yeah.
I appreciate the precision.
Yes. At least for the first two or three, then we make it up on interest and penalties.
We do, we will.
I guess somebody can make the motion to get a tax increase, and then we'll go through that process.
I, I would like, if nothing else, to have the hearings and then see how, I mean, if, if, that between moving money, uh, missing out on everything else, I mean, this would give us a better idea of what you need to increase.
What does our timeframe look like?
We're gonna have to do a step best, um, meaning there'll probably have another meeting on-
The first hearing would be seven days after the first advertisement, first notice.
When did you advertise?
It's like Sunday would be, as soon as we could actually post the notification for a hearing, seven days later, we could have one.
We have to post another meeting for a proposed tax rate, and then we post that, and then have our meetings, and we have to have two, two more meetings, but we can wrap those up in ten days.
And then three days after that hearing, you would have your second hearing, but at the same time, right after on the, the second hearing, we could approve the, uh, the rate on the same day.
And that is something-
Well, you'd be talking about, if you did it this Sunday, the earliest you could have would be Friday of next week, Thursday or Friday of next week.
Seven days.
Yeah, it'd have to be the fall and Monday.
Monday or-
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth and the nineteenth.
Do you realize that only leaves you two weeks, right?
That's fine.
Then the second, uh, hearing would be three days after the next posting.
And that would be the-
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. And you would have to set the adoption of the budget for the twenty-fifth or twenty-eighth or somewhere in there, the last. Which then, what does that do to your ability to send out tax notice? Yeah, we'll pass the twenty-fourth. You wouldn't have the tax rate until almost the last day of the month.
Um, that might hold the, the state's a little bit, but we can try. Everything's gonna be done, you spend, you spend the, the taxes, that's when you start building the, the tax code and the statements, and, and then the planning company takes another six, seven days to plan out.
I would like to have the hearings if possible, I mean, but, I mean, we're already trying to move money from interest and sinking, we've already cut, what, nine hundred thousand dollars out of this budget.
You did, and we're, on, on the ones who are on the audit committee, we know that investors do like to see sixty days non-assigned, and we're at five to six days, so we do know that that needs-
You're, you're five to six days because all your, your money is, is tied up in a-
No, 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 that, 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 that doesn't have anything to do with it, because it all flows down on the sign, whether it's outstanding or not, because once, once a dollar is spent, it's counted as revenue. So we're, we're at five to six days, and we need to be healthy sixty, which is roughly sixteen percent of your revenue, so that's where we need to be.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money.
And we're not there, but that money is tied up in IRS.
That's the point I was trying to make, the money's sitting somewhere, you can't access it.
Correct.
It's not that it's not there, you just can't access it. Which is where the, the, the money's been hidden.
Just smiling. I'm listening, I thought I've been doing a pretty good job by not talking so much. I talked to you, man.
You wanna go down to somebody, you gotta make the motion.
The motion that we go through is a process-
Processing hearings.
Whether we raise the tax or not, that's just up to the court.
Second, the motion.
At what rate?
Well, that we raise it, uh-
That's, that's what we'll talk about, that's what we'll talk about.
No, you have to publish the proposed rate, you have to publish the rate. That's part of the hearing, you have to publish the proposed rate.
And that's gonna be, that's something that we're gonna have to really talk about.
Propose rate first, and then we have the hearings.
Yeah, you don't even have all the stuff in this agenda to be able to accomplish a task.
It's gonna be tight, when we ran it, when we ran it, we did.
Advertise, right?
Because what you have to do first is, in the meeting, just like we did at the last one, proposed tax rate, you're gonna have to have an item to do a proposed tax rate, pathetic proposed tax rate again.
To vote on the proposed tax rate.
Yes, and then you're gonna have to publish it, the proposed tax rate.
Yes.
And you're gonna have to have a hearing process, so that means on, at some point, we gotta have, I mean, this, this agenda is just discussion of possible election budget workshop, I don't know if we can, can you? I don't have an attorney, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, my understanding was we need to have a, a meeting to set the proposed tax rate, and then we'll have the two, uh, uh, tax rate hearings.
Or at least you can do that as a Monday, right?
And that pushes it back two days.
So if you, if you, if you do a proposed tax rate on Monday, you can publish on Wednesday or Tuesday. Then you have seven, what'd you say, seven days?
Mm-hmm.
And then you have, three days after that, you have another one?
Yeah, you have to wait, uh, seven or ten?
Seven on the first one, three on-
You have to wait, right, you have to wait seven days on the first.
So you have the first meeting, and then you publish another meeting.
No more.
Now this, so if you do it Monday, you have seven days, you have to run on Tuesday, so that's, does that include weekends, or just seven?
So if you publish it on Tuesday, you'd have to have the meeting on Wednesday, or the following.
Following Wednesday, and then three or four days later, you'll have your final.
Which would be the following Monday on the twenty-third, which would be the final hearing, and then at that point, at that meeting-
You can adopt.
You can also adopt. Vote the back rate.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if that's what the court wants to do, he needs to put it on the agenda for Monday.
But time-wise, we haven't.
You're gonna be right at the end of the month, but you're cutting it forward, I mean, we still have the ability of going October if we have to.
But we could, this would be still manageable.
Yeah, as long as you don't miss something in that process.
You can run the agenda for Monday, the proposed tax rate? And then if, if, Matt, if you could get us this, uh, moving the two cents out of the interest and sinking.
So you can put a, a draft, proposed tax rate, and then another budget workshop, so we can look at all-
travel and training and our office supplies, so I would, if we can, is there any way that we can move some of our civil litigation, like, to the office supplies and travel and training, if we want to finalize it?
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't, that would be-
But what, what amount?
Uh, if we could, just maybe add, uh, one thousand to the office supplies?
Yeah.
And then maybe about, uh, five hundred to the travel and training.
Reducing the, the civil litigation.
The civil litigation, yes. And that would make more sense for us, thank you.
Yes, I'll put that on Monday's agenda, proposed tax rate and a budget workshop. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Yeah, hey, buddy.
Good morning, Judge Faldes and, uh, County Commissioner, I'm Alessandra Princes, I'm Culture and Border Organization, and I am here to address the issue of changing the commissioners' meeting time from that of the morning to that of the evening, I believe last year, a motion was made, and was passed, that Judge Faldes, you were going to set the meetings for evening, the second Monday of every month, and, uh, it hasn't happened, so that, you know, this conversation this morning amongst the commissioners and the county legislature is very interesting, very important, a lot of the people that perhaps might wanna be here to listen to this, and also speak to you directly, cannot make it if they're working, that's not to say that there's a guarantee that if there is any meeting, that you'll be packed with citizens wanting to engage you publicly, but at least you have given them the option to do so if they want it to. Right now, they don't have that option. So I am here to remind you about the motion that passed last year, to let you know that nothing came out of it, and we are asking again for those meetings to be set for the evening, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Matt, this means adjourned.